Bugs and mosquitoes and all that stuff up there?
No.
The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Frank, would you perform a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Raywall.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natdig.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Fred. Six present and one absent, Your Honor.
Very good. Folks, would you rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone. It's a pleasure to see council chambers full tonight. I hope we don't have a fire in the next 15 minutes, but that's okay. Corey, would you join me at the podium?
Here.
Tonight, we're swearing in a new Muscatine Fire Department firefighter. Corey Schackenbach.
Bach.
That's a good German name. Good German name. So, Corey, what I'd like you to do is to repeat after me, okay? Good job. And when I, yeah, raise your right hand. That's correct. I, Corey Schackenbach.
I, Corey Schackenbach.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of firefighter in the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
Of firefighter in the city of Muscatine.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Required by law.
Very good. And all you have to do, sir, is sign right here. Of course, it's council's chamber to shake your hand and welcome you to the fire department.
Yeah, I have that feeling. I know that.
Say, Corey, yes.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Thanks for giving it up.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving right along. If there's anyone in council chambers that has an item or an issue to discuss with council that is not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Girlfriend. Seeing none.
And I guess that means that there is no one. Moving along to item number five, the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes items six A through B, items eight A through E, items nine A through C, item 12A, and tonight's total expenditures, or tonight's total expenditures totaling $7,176,760.12?
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
And a second Jeanette. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item B. This public hearing concerns the proposed vacation of utility easements in Lot One of the University Development subdivision. The request is for the vacation of a seven-and-a-half-foot utility easement along the north line of Lot One of the University Development subdivision located at 2701 University Avenue. A vacation of the utility easement will allow for the construction of a building in this portion of the plotted utility easement. Prior to formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment? Is there any discussion? Motion to close.
Move to close.
Scott? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second Osama. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item B. This public hearing concerns the proposed amending of the zoning ordinance for 2107 Grandview Avenue, formerly the Lamp Light Inn. The property owners have submitted a request to rezone a four-acre parcel in this address from M1 Light Industrial to RR multifamily residential to allow for the conversion of the former Lamp Light Inn into one-bedroom apartments. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing must be held. Now is the time for the public to comment? Is there any discussion on this?
Vote to close.
Motion to close, Osama.
Second.
And a second Scott. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item B. This public hearing concerns the proposed vacation of utility easements in Lot One of the University Development subdivision. The request is for the vacation of a seven-and-a-half-foot utility easement along the north line of Lot One of the University Development subdivision located at 2701 University Avenue. A vacation of the utility easement will allow for the construction of a building in this portion of the plotted utility easement. Prior to formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment? Is there any discussion? Motion to close.
Move to close.
Scott? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second Osama. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item C. This public hearing concerns the proposed vacation of utility easements in lots 14 and 15 of the Riverbend Second Edition. The property owners at 3302 Clermont, located in the Riverbend Second Edition, are requesting the vacation of a 10-foot-wide utility easement composed of two adjoining 5-foot utility easements. The property owners plan to combine these two parcels. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment? Is there any discussion? Motion to close.
Osama.
Osama.
Second.
Second Jeanette. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, dropping down to item 11 from the city administrator. Presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the 2107 Grandview Avenue, formerly Lamp Light Inn. The property owners have submitted a request to rezone a four-acre parcel at this address from M1 Light Industrial to RR multifamily residential to allow for the conversion of the former Lamp Light Inn into one-bedroom apartments. Is there a motion to approve the reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama?
Second, Your Honor.
Second Phil. Any discussion?
Your Honor, currently today, are they operating as a multifamily?
I don't believe they're operating at all.
Okay, so let's close down. There isn't anybody staying within the building?
My understanding is today is that there's only been internal demolition, which does not require a permit. They cannot proceed with any construction until the rezoning takes place, at which time they can apply for a building permit from the Community Development Office.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council? This is a roll call, beginning with Osama.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Or, I'm sorry, Phil.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the vacation of utility easements in Lot One of the University Development subdivision. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott?
Second.
Second Bob. Any discussion? This also is a roll call, beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
She carries six to zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the vacation of utility easements in Lot 14 and 15 of the Riverbend Second Edition. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette?
Second.
And Bob, on the second, any discussion? Also a roll call, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the final plat for the Papoose Forest subdivision. A request has been filed for a preliminary and/or final plat for this subdivision. The intent is to allow for certain property lines to be rearranged and to allow for the property owners to establish a forest reservation on a portion of the property. This subdivision will not create any developable parcels. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second, Your Honor.
Second Osama. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing and environmental assessment availability for the proposed improvement of the Mississippi Drive from Main Street to the Norbert F. Becky Bridge. The purpose of the hearing is to update the public on the progress of the project, present the completed environmental assessment for the study area, the draft for F statement for the Puritan Ice Building, the alternatives carried forward in the environmental assessment, and the impacts of these alternatives, and gather feedback from the public about the project, the environmental assessment, and the draft for F statement. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, October 15, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Phil?
Second.
Second Scott. Any discussion?
Just a brief explanation of what a 4F statement is.
This is the environmental assessment that was on the council's agenda, environmental assessment and 4F that the council approved. This is simply part of the public notice period. FHWA has signed the document. It's moving through the process for signatures. This is simply the public comment period.
Anyone else, council?
I, just curious here, it's, if that portion was owned by the state and they didn't have to do any assessment on it, why, when it came to the city, we have to do an assessment on it?
Good question.
Did they follow the law during that period or not?
When there was construction on Mississippi Drive within the corridor?
Yeah.
It's my understanding they did not have to comply with the environmental assessment. However, they used state funding. They did not apply or receive federal funding. We did receive federal funding as part of the original, just over 1.1, 1.2 million dollars for the environmental process through Congressman Lobzak's office, and therefore we have the requirement. Of course, at that, sorry, of course, at that time, we were also expecting to go back and seek additional federal fundings, which has since frankly dried up.
Anyone else, council? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and this is a roll call vote, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item F. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution supporting approval and adoption of the Muscatine County Multijurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Cities are required to adopt the plan in order to be eligible for future FEMA funding. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama?
Second.
Second Scott. Any discussion? A roll call again, beginning with Osama.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item G. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. Periodically, the city takes action to assess unpaid nuisance abatement costs and rental inspection fees to private properties. The fee being requested for assessment at this time totals $6,484.70. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Jeanette? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second Scott. Any discussion? Also a roll call, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the annual city street finance report for fiscal year 2014-2015. Street-related expenditures for the year total 9,000, and I'm sorry, 9,102, 102,320, let me start over, 9,102,326, which includes 8,836,139 dollars paid from city funds and funding sources, and 266,187 dollars of street lighting costs provided by Muscatine Power and Water. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
I'll give that to Bob, and Scott, you can have the second. Any discussion, council?
Who had the second?
Scott did.
Is that the reason we have 7,176, this?
The expenditures?
The bills, yep. Is that the reason for?
We have 1.8 million dollars roughly in expenditures. I asked Nancy to bring the file up because Mayor Hopkins had a question, and just over 5 million in transfers, for example, between road use and local option for street projects, end-of-year transfers, et cetera.
I thought we bought a couple horses or something, so, but Nancy can explain that.
Yeah, the journal entries for June are on the bill list, and that's when one fund pays another fund. And so we did a lot of the funding transfers where local option paid for the West Hill Sewer, local option paid for the street overlay, road use tax funds, we did transfers for that. So a lot of those hit in June. That's why the large amount for the bill list today.
The actual expenditures are about 1.8, which is more in line.
Yeah, the street finance report, though, a lot of that is through the year, the total we expended, and a lot of that is Cedar in Colorado.
Thanks, Nancy.
Anyone else, council? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. This is a roll call vote, beginning with Bob.
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on an urban renewal plan amendment and approval of the 2015 Urban Renewal Development Agreement with Dorsey and Whitney LLP. The amendment of the plan will facilitate the undertaking of a new urban renewal project consisting, yes, consisting of providing tax increment financing support to Union Tank Company. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, October 15, 2015, at 7:00 PM in City Council, City Hall Council chambers. In addition, it is necessary to approve the agreement with Dorsey and Whitney LLP. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama?
Second, Your Honor.
Second Phil. Any discussion? Also a roll call, beginning with Osama.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve an addendum to the collection services agreement with the Municipal Collections of America Incorporated. ATE fines that are not paid to Gasko and forwarded to MCOA for collection. The proposed addendum to the MCOA agreement will allow unpaid ambulance fees, as well as other unpaid invoices for other city departments, to be listed with MCOA for collections. The addendum is being proposed to approve and streamline the overall debt collection process for city departments. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second Scott. Any discussion?
What is the percentage that MCOA get out of this? Or is it a lump sum on monthly basis?
Because Nancy's making her way up, on the ATEs, there's a fee that's added onto the cost. Ambulance does not have the additional fee, and they receive, the percentage is based on the contract.
Is it per ticket or per item, or is it monthly?
The ATE fines, it's 25%, but per the ordinance, our ordinance, that collection cost, cost of collection is passed on to the debtor. So they get 25%, but we get the full 100, 100% of the underlying fines for the ATE fines.
So the 25%, it's addition to the fine to offset the administrative fee?
Yes. Yes, for only the ATEs, because our ordinance is written that way. For the other things we list, it will also be 25%, but that'll be taken out of the proceeds for ambulance and any other accounts we list.
Thanks, Nancy.
Anyone else, council?
What's their success ratio on the ambulance collections?
84%. It's real high.
It's actually very good for ambulance. I think it is 84% of collectible charges. So there's full charges, and then there's mandatory write downs for Medicare, but we're at 84%.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council? Thanks, Nancy. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and this is a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item K. Boring, the boring for the dredge line needs to be upsized from 16 inches to a 30-inch pipe to allow for the removal of large pieces of scrap concrete. The larger pipe will allow workers to safely extract of large pieces of concrete. Staff is recommending the approval of change order number three, which would allow work to be done by Nicole Boring Incorporated under the city contract with Sulzberger Escavating at an estimated cost of $13,690. Canadian Pacific has granted a license to bore a 16-inch line and must approve any adjustments to the work being done. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Osama, and a second?
A hesitation.
Second.
Second Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item L. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve an airport lease agreement with Green Processing Corporation. Green Processing Corporation has a current lease agreement with the city of Muscatine for the use of a corporate hangar they have constructed and maintained at the Muscatine Municipal Airport. Due to the significant investment they are making to expand the hangar, they are asking for approval of a new lease agreement. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
And second Mike? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item M. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order for the soccer complex building paint project. One bid was received and met with minimum requested specifications. The bid was Terry &amp; Sons Painting in the amount of $25,550. The fiscal year 2014-2015 budget had $24,000 approved for this project and was carried over to the fiscal year 2015-2016, operating year. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
So moved, Your Honor.
Scott, and?
I'll second.
Phil, one second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item N. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the posting of no parking in alley between Green and Main Streets off of George Street. This alley is only 16-foot wide, and it is difficult for snowplows to negotiate. Residents in the area have had problems with people blocking the alley with parked cars and making their driveways inaccessible. The traffic committee is recommending the installation of "No Parking in Alley" signs at this location. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama? Second, anyone?
Second.
Phil? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item O. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the posting of no trucks on Lucas Street between the US Bypass and Hauser Street. Traffic committee received a request to post no trucks on this portion of Lucas Street. The farm implement business and egg learning center will not be impacted by this restriction. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Phil? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second Scott. Any discussion?
Mayor, can someone please explain to me why there should be no trucks on Lucas Street?
Randy, you want to address that?
First of all, it's an asphalt street. You may have a lot of asphalt street, but it's not necessarily a direct route to any particular business. And we get semis, whatever, and this is a request coming from the neighborhood that end up going down Lucas because they've been misdirected, I don't know, by their GPS or whatever, and actually are en route down to another industry in town, over to Cedar Street, down to GPC or whatever. And so they've gotten off the route, and really, the intersection at Hauser and Lucas is not set up for big turning movements for semis. Like I said, we just put a new asphalt overlay on that street, too. And the, well, with trucks, they can use the most direct route to get to their point of destination. So if a truck, delivery truck wanted to get to the egg learning center, for instance, or bringing in farm equipment or whatever it might be, they can use that to get to where they want to go. But to just use that as a shortcut, or that they've gotten misdirected there, is not necessarily what we want. So that's how it came about, Bob.
I would also add that possibly the no, no parking sign should also be, be put on Miller's Hill, because there's trucks going up and down that as well.
I had not known that. Okay. Anything else?
Council?
Thank you for the concrete on Chestnut.
Concrete on Chestnut.
It was just, thank you.
Yes, yes, the, I can give you a full update on all these projects, but I won't if you don't want one.
Just thank you.
Thanks, Randy. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and I guess there's no discussion, so all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Item P. Presented for City Council's consideration is a request to approve a speed limit change on Cedar Street from Param to Hauser. Cedar Street is now a wide, three-lane roadway with a trail for the entire street's length. Traffic volumes on the street are expected to increase. The traffic committee is recommending the City Council take action to designate the speed limit on Cedar Street as thirty-five miles per hour from Hauser to Param. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
So that's Phil. And a Bob, Bob for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, folks, now dropping down to item fourteen, communication from council members, and we'll begin with Councilman Raywell.
Question, please, back on E, having to do with the K. draft report. Do I understand correctly, had that been a state project, no EA would have been necessary?
Because we received federal funding originally for the, for the planning and the environmental assessment, that federal funding dictated the need for the EA four F. and the MOA that the council approved.
But had it been a state project, would there have been an EA? Or a county project?
Mayor? Council members, I'm going to take this one off the wing, but I do know for a fact that when the state does projects, that they do the environmental compliance documents just like everybody else does them. I think the difference that, that they were talking about before had, had mostly to do with the, with maybe previous projects that had just been done by the state as part of their maintenance and et cetera, et cetera. But if they were to embark upon a big project, they have to do their environmental compliance just like everybody else has to.
Okay, thank you. Is the lack of federal funding now just due to the transportation bill not having been passed? Is that a temporary problem?
Not that we've heard. I've talked several times to some of our federal staffers, and it's, it's more of an earmark problem. This was, we had Mayor Brian and Steve Boca had gone to DC eight years ago, probably at this point in time, and, and that's where this initial funding had come about, with the plan to, get the plan done, not in eight years, but in, in a couple of years, and, and then seek federal funding, you know, perhaps a STAG grant or, or some other funding from, through our legislative process, as well as seek funding from, from state resources as well.
How do we, how do we, of course earmarks aren't supposed to exist anymore, but they obviously do. How do we get an earmark now?
An earmark, or with an earmark will come additional federal requirements for the project which will, could increase our costs. If you recall, in the MOA, we don't currently have to comply, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but we do not currently have to comply with Davis Bacon on this project. That would, of course, become a requirement. We have all of the requirements that are in the MOA, but there would be others. We do have to participate in Buy America for this program. However, we can break the project out into component pieces that, you know, that are outside of the contract, for example, in working with MPW, they'll do that as a, or the, you know, the poles and electric is a separate project, so they don't have to participate in, in, in Buy America, and those costs will be able to come down.
So it's mainly Davis Bacon thing?
Davis Bacon, and there may?
Right away acquisition.
And right away acquisition process, absolutely, and relocation costs associated with, with acquisition. But last time, I, we keep in touch with federal staffers pretty regularly, and indication was there was no, no funding in, in sight.
Okay, this was, you know, totally, completely moot because it's hindsight of eight or nine years ago, but the, the law of unintended consequences seems to have been that we had to do the EA because we borrowed the money to do it. So we borrowed the money to do the federal EA, and then we had to do it. If we hadn't borrowed the money to do it, we might not have had to have done it.